February 18th, 2014, meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois, called to order he'd rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lesko.
Here.
Alderman Canman.
Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Thailand.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here. Okay, the first item on our zoning agenda is docket number 2014-001 for property located at 1028 North 9th. The petitioner is Interjet Singh. The present zoning classification is a B1 Highway Business Service District, Section 155.033. The requested zoning relief, a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.033, conditional permitted uses in B1 Highway Business Service District, and Section 155.210, packaged liquor sales, and a variance of Section 155.210, packaged liquor sales, to allow packaged liquor sales within 100 feet of a residentially zoned lot. The Springfield-Samson County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is to accept the staff's recommendation to approve the petition for conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.033, conditional permitted uses in B1 Highway Business Service District, and Section 155.210, packaged liquor sales, and a variance of Section 155.210, packaged liquor sales, to allow packaged liquor sales within 100 feet of a residentially zoned lot. Chair will entertain a motion.
I want to make a motion to accept and do an amendment to... we don't want to sell the single-serving alcohol. So, to amend for passage with the exception of single-serving bottles.
Is that the 40 ounces, is that what you're talking about?
You're talking about the beer, the half-pints, pints?
We're talking about the single servings, the shots, the...
Airplane bottles?
Right.
Say 170... I think that's 175 milliliter.
Right.
I'll second that.
Okay, let me repeat it and see if we can get this down. The motion and second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve the petition for conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.033, conditional permitted uses in the B1 Highway Business Service District, and Section 155.210, packaged liquor sales, with a variance of Section 155.210, packaged liquor sales, to allow packaged liquor sales within 100 feet of a residentially zoned lot, with the exception of sales of alcoholic beverages of under 1.75 milligrams?
I think it's 175 milliliter.
Milliliter.
It's commonly called airplane bottles by the liquor industry when you're ordering them.
Three ounce bottles. Not that I would know of.
Not that you know of.
Mayor, I think we're trying to duplicate what we did for the mobile, when we approved the zoning for the mobile station on MacArthur.
But we need to have it back.
Correct?
Yes.
So, why don't we just use whatever that language was that we used at that time?
Well, we need to be clear.
We need to be a little clearer in terms of what...
I thought it was 40 ounces and the airplane.
Yeah, we... On the mobile on MacArthur, we got rid of the single-serve beers, the single-serve 40-ounce or last beers, and the airplane bottles. I think... I don't remember. That was back when it was Alderman Simarosa or Alderman Mahoney.
Correct.
I think they got rid of half-pints, too, and left pints alone.
Well, perhaps the zoning... Mr. McLaughlin, who was in the zoning office at that time, might know what that criteria was that was used at that time.
But that's moot. It's not what the Alderman... That's not the motion he made. He was specifically looking at, as the clerk pointed out, a three-ounce bottle of hard liquor. Frank?
Alderman Lesko.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. The single-serving hard liquor bottles is what we're looking for. Single-serving of wine, single-serving of beers. Okay? So, the beers, 40 ounces and below.
That's the motion, and we have a second.
Yes.
Now, he's changed it.
Okay, so we have a motion and second.
Forty ounces and below.
Yeah. Forty... Okay, 40 ounces and below.
Okay.
Half-pints are below, and single-serve wine, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Mr. Gates, are you representing?
Yes, I'm representing the petitioner. This is all news to me.
Okay, well, if you'd like to make any...
We don't have a problem. As I said, this is news to me. I didn't know this was... What the motion was going to be. We don't have a problem with the single-serving hard liquor. That's no problem at all. But I'm not sure, are we... Were you also talking about the...
The 25-ounce cans, like, they comes by single-serve as beer, so it's...
Yes.
It's 25 ounces, that's what we're talking about. I mean, we don't mind, like, 50 ml, so we can sell, like, a 12-pack 50 ml. This comes in, like, packages, you know?
Right.
I mean, the only thing, we don't have to sell, like, a single, like, a 50 ml, like, break up the 12-pack and give the, like, 50 ml to, like, we use to do the other store. So, we... I really don't mind that. We can sell, like, a 12-pack 50 ml, or we can sell, like, a tall-can beer comes at 25 ounces.
So, I guess the...
This is how we sell, yeah.
So, the question is, is a 25-ounce...
Yes.
Is that one of the things that you're asking that we be restricted from selling?
Yes. 40 ounces or less.
Forty ounces or less.
Of any kind of alcohol.
Just single container.
For can of beer.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. Further discussion?
Mayor, I know this was kind of controversial. A couple of the neighborhood organizations had opposed this when it came out, by a particular Enos Park, Lincoln Park, which mostly is in Ward 5, even though this facility is in Ward 4. But I'd like to commend both neighborhood organizations on being... Trying to be reasonable. I think, you know, this is a great example of how two sides that come into a situation with opposing viewpoints can reach a compromise that works out, I think, in the best interest of both in the end. We have... We have a business there that will continue, rather than an empty building or an empty gas station, and we're protecting the neighborhood by preventing the sale... The single-serving sales, which is what the neighborhood associations were most concerned about. So, I think it's an excellent compromise. Alderman Lesko, and I thank you for the work you did on this.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes.
I'm trying to vote.
Okay, 9-1. Okay, the next item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2014-002 for property located at 1737 North 14th Street. The petitioner is Margaret and George Richard. The present zoning classification is an I1 light industrial district, Section 155.040. The requested zoning relief, reclassification to I2 heavy industrial district, Section 155.041, and permitted... Conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.041, conditional permitted uses in an I2 heavy industrial district, to allow the petitioner to dismantle cars for processing and recycling. The Springfield-Samson County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is to deny the petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
I want to make a motion to allow the petitioner his desires to dismantle cars for processing and recycling.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second to allow the petitioner to approve the... And Alderman, I'm not putting words in your mouth, the petition as presented.
Yes.
Further discussion? Hearing no further...
Mayor?
Yes.
Are there any objectors here? Do you wish to comment?
My name is Tom Adams. I live at 1736 North 14th, directly across from him. I used to own the property when... And had a tow company in there. I was never allowed to dismantle my cars or anything, or even leave them outside the lot. I had to keep them inside. He does it... Was doing it before. He even tried for the zoning. He had so many car parts out there, it made our whole neighborhood look bad. I had other neighbors up here at the zoning meeting, but they couldn't make it tonight. There's a lot of them in the neighborhood that's against it. They don't want a junkyard or dismantling facilities across the street from their house. Afraid it's going to bring down the value of their house. Yeah, I'm against it. I mean, it even went on after the zoning hearing.
How many from the neighborhood were at the zoning hearings?
Well, me and my wife was here. There was four or five other people was here. And they're all directly across from the property there.
Mr. Mayor, is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wondered.
Okay. Alderman Edwards?
Is this an increase in the classification? Is this a heavier industrial use?
Yes, it is.
If it wasn't going to be cars dismantled, and we grant this, and it doesn't work out, it's classified as I2, now what can be put in there? If they say...
Anything?
This doesn't work out, we're going to do something else. What can be put in there with an I2?
You could have a chemical plant. You could have warehouses. It's the most intense district that we've got.
And how close is your house to it?
My house is probably 50, 75 foot away from it.
Alderman Simpson?
Mr. Adams, and you say you were never allowed to...
I was never allowed to do that.
Did you request it?
If I let weeds grow up around my fence, I got a notice from the city to get them cut down. All summer long, he has let weeds and trees grow up along his fence and never cut them down.
So, 5-2 here denies.
Mayor?
Alderman Cameron?
First, to the zoning administrator, I think Alderman Edwards said that he's trying to get it... That it is I2 now, but it's...
No, it's I1.
Yeah, it's I1. So, the question is, I'd like to know not what it... What could be done under I2, but what could be done under the current zoning, I1?
He could have a tow yard in I1, and you could have warehouses.
And do you or the witness know what the property's being used for right now?
Yes, it's a tow company.
Oh, it's a tow company. Okay. So, he stores cars there, but you... You think it's okay for him to store the... Tow the cars there, but you don't want him to dismantle the cars?
As long as he keeps it in a needly order, which he don't do that. It's got a pile of junk right in the middle of his lot. If you look through his drive-in gate, you can see a pile of junk sitting right there.
Would that... Would that, what he's describing, be a violation of the zoning law or some other ordinance?
Yeah, it'd be... He's only allowed to have a tow lot there. He can tow cars there, be picked up, or hauled away. That's it.
So, if he's storing junk, why isn't... Hasn't he been cited for that?
He hasn't. That's why he's here.
Or has he?
Yeah.
You know, the... Under what the current zoning, he cannot dismantle a car. That's the...
Right, but he has... According to the witness, he has junk piles there, not just tires in their together state. Is that correct?
Yeah. He has also dismantled vehicles outside of his lot, too. He had three semi trucks parked out there he was dismantling through the summertime.
Alderman Joe? I guess my question would be to Alderman Lesko. Why are you changing and going against the recommendation of the planning commission and your staff? Well, I want to allow him to be able to dismantle the cars inside his fencing, not on the outside, but inside of his tow lot. He doesn't sell parts. It's not a junkyard. He simply dismantles them and ships them out to recycling. Is... Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Here.
Gates, is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Ma'am.
I'm Denise Adams. I live at 1736 North 14th, across from his tow lot. My property is valued at $75,000, and both of my properties are, and I want to get $75,000 out of them, you know? They tow cars in and... In hole, in the... Inside, and then they take old cars and bring them out and start scrapping them out there. I've taken several pictures of them, and you can see them on my phone. I've taken several pictures of them outside of the lot. They have another tow company that is parking cars outside the lot. They're taking tires off and storing them in the back of the lot and in the front of the lot, so we can see the tires in the lot. Oh, and they park on the wrong side of the road. I... The lot is here. I'm across the street, and I can't get out of my driveway because their truck is parked right there. I can't get them to move or anything else. I told Nick that the driver, that he needs to move his truck. He won't do it. I don't know if somebody said something to him or not, but, you know, this is crazy. I can't even hardly get out of my driveway. I have to not go anywhere to be able to get out of my driveway, you know? I can show you the pictures on my phone, too, that they're outside the lot. So, if you need to see them, I will show you them, too.
Mayor, could I ask you a question?
I think Alderman Thailand.
Sure.
Actually, my question's for zoning, so go ahead.
Are you saying that the petitioner is putting car parts on your driveway, blocking you in?
No, 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 no. Their tow trucks are blocking in... Out in the street, blocking my pathway to get out.
So, you're saying he's... Tow truck parks in front of your driveway?
And the wrong side of the road. The lot's over here, and he's going right here, parking on this side, and he going this way.
Well, have you called the police or asked the petitioner to do anything about that?
No, because I asked Nick to... The driver, and he didn't want to cooperate with me, so, you know?
So, you asked him to move your... His tow truck to say, "Get your car out," and he said, "No, I'm not going to move it."
Yes, exactly, yes. You know, it's bogus, because I can't get my car out. He has... He got woke up late at... Late at night, about 12 o'clock at night, and he couldn't go back to sleep for about an hour, because they were sitting over there running trucks and everything else. And that was Saturday night, you know?
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Alderman Thailand?
You mentioned that he had been cited. Is that the only time he's been cited? And then he came in for the relief after the citation? Or has he been cited multiple times?
He's been cited a few times. He cleans it up and then...
But it's the same offenses?
It has been lately, yes, this year.
Further discussion?
I'd like to ask the petitioner to come forward, please.
Mr. Richards, if you'd just state your name and address with the record.
Jorgey Richard, 2951 Windsor Road, house on the property of 1737 North 14th.
And I guess my question is, were you aware of the tow trucks blocking their drive?
Actually, the other neighbor at the city hearing mentioned it, and I went over and told her, if she ever had a problem with them doing it, to come tell me. And you know that she's not here, because we sat down, we solved the problem. Her problem was that and the dog barking. I'm not getting rid of my dog.
What hours are operation?
Our tow operation runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The date that is questioned was Valentine's Day, when we had the snowstorm. The city called for a snow emergency. Yes, our trucks were running late at night. We were telling city police officers. We were bringing them in off the street so the plows could work.
Okay. As far as dismantling cars, what are the hours that you do that?
Usually, we do it during daylight hours only.
And are they contained within the fencing?
Majority of the time, they was. During demo derby season is Illinois State Fair. We put cars together to wrap them up for breast cancer. Those cars do get moved outside the lot, but those cars run, they're drove out, they run, they drive in. And during loading and unloading of those cars, there's multiple rollbacks there and multiple car transporters there, because we put anywhere from 10 cars to 35 cars together for that show.
My question next is to zoning. Is there a way that we can grant him an ordinance or a variance just for dismantling the cars, and then if the property sells, that variance goes away?
That's what the conditional permitted use is for, correct?
Okay. That's my only ask. I don't want I2. I don't want full I2.
You have to have the I2 with the conditional permitted use for taking the cars apart.
Okay. Then I want to... I want to change my motion to that, to leaving the zoning at I2 and give a conditional permit variance.
Leave it at I1.
I1 right now. We need a reclassification to I2 in order to give the CPU for the dismantling. That's the reason why there's a request for an I2 upzoning.
Okay, is there a way to give the I2 with that variance, and then if they go to sell the property, it goes away?
No, reclassification of zoning stays. An I2 would stay.
My understanding is an I1 is I can also do the dismantling with a variance on an I1, means that the only thing I want to do is the actual dismantling.
No. You cannot dismantle unless it's an I2 with a CPU for dismantling. That's the only way to do dismantling.
Then with the variance on there, would they then, when they sold the property, would it be just a straight I2 zoning, or would it still have the conditional permitted use for dismantling cars?
That runs with the land.
So, if he sells it... If you grant an I2 with a CPU for dismantling, if he sells the property, it goes out of business, the I2 and the CPU for dismantling stay with the land. Means the next owner can do anything in I2, or he can also do I2 with auto dismantling.
So, what classification is auto dismantling going to be under, then?
I2.
I2 with a CPU.
With CPU.
Alderman Griffin?
A couple of quick things, is I saw that when you could talk to Mr. Richards, originally they were talking about maybe putting it to an hour, and you didn't really seem like you had a real problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
So, that's something you may want to consider, make it a little more palatable. And one of the things I read in there that concern is devil's advocate, if you don't get this, what do you do with them cars?
What do I do?
Yeah.
Devil's advocate, you just got a junkyard because I get to pile the cars up, because, you know, that's the devil's advocate part. I have money invested in these cars, because I tow them in. There's one car sitting there, just the tow bill, not the storage, is over $200.
And that's what I'm saying, is that's what my concern is.
If I leave...
If you don't have anything to do with these cars, they're not going anywhere.
I'm not going to take a loss of money on them. You know, and that's basically... You know, basically, what we've been doing is, they said it's about the tires. According to EPA rules, tires can be stacked outside as long as they're still on the rim. You go check all them tires, they're still on the rim. Why? Because the guy that hauls the tires out and doesn't, doesn't have room for them, because I have a licensed tire hauler coming in to pick up the tires, and he takes them out.
He's a tow line.
But I don't take and have tires sitting around my lot, not on the rim. If they're off the rim, they're stored in the three-storage tray. Majority of the metal gets put into the three-storage tray. Only the motors are still out there, and we're cleaning them up. But it's kind of hard to clean them up, and we're running the trucks 24 hours a day during a snow emergency.
Alderman Edwards, then.
Alderman Turner? So, you can't do... I kind of understand what you're saying. You get more money if you salvage them or for parts.
No, we don't want to sell parts.
Well, then, why don't you just get a certificate of salvage and leave them as a whole, and do it that way, without just mailing them, and you won't need a different classification?
Because if we do as a whole, a Ford Escort weighs 1,000 pounds.
Right.
Right now, that's paying $200. Like I said, I have a tow...
You're not going to get any more for it if you disassemble it.
Yes, I will.
As parts, that's what I just...
No, no. As recycled, because a Ford Escort also has a catalytic converter sitting underneath the car that is worth $80. It has four tires on the car. These tires are good. I can sell each one of those tires for $10 a piece.
I didn't think the state of Illinois could sell used tires.
I sell them to recycle them, a licensed tire hauler.
I caught your comment where you said there's no way to get rid of them, and actually there is, if you just get a salvage certi...
There is, but I have to take a loss.
I think that's what you're looking at here, when you say you wouldn't have anything to do with the business. First of all, you can tow, then you can get a salvage certificate and dispose of the vehicle, and granted, you're not going to get as much money, but you can still dispose of the vehicle.
I can dispose of the vehicle now. You just got a piece of property, because I made $80,000 disposing of it my way, which is taking the Alderman's out.
Yeah, but the problem you got is it's not certified. That piece of property's not certified to do what you've been doing.
Yeah.
It's certified to tow. It's certified to get salvage certificates for them and dispose them whole.
And when I first started, I was under the understanding I could take and do it.
But that's not our fault.
So, once I got told no, I came in forward to get it changed. I don't want to be a junkyard. I just want to process the cars to recycle them. And the only way I could actually show you is to take... Show you how the different parts...
I know how it's done.
Yeah. A lady mentioned recycl... Or rebuilders. I'm a licensed rebuilder, too. If that car needs more than a window crank on it to rebuild it, I junk it. I can take the cars to Dick Taylor and have him do the bodywork to them. It's not worth all the money that I would have to put out to get the little bit back.
No, no, I understand how it works. What I'm saying is, you said you don't know what you do with the property, but your property is worth what it's worth for a tow yard and the salvage of cars as whole. That's what you have. What you want to do is they have to do it different than what you're doing, and that takes a different classification.
Yeah.
And that's... That's what we're voting on, because if you go away, that classification stays with that neighborhood. It doesn't go away. I'm reluctant to give a higher industrial use inside our corporate city limits. It's not doing what they're doing. It's just, once it's there, it's tough to get rid of.
Well, the only thing that I can't understand is that whole area is I1.
Right. It's not I2. It's I1.
Yeah. Those houses are actually I1. If those houses, right now, unless it's changed, if one of those houses was to burn more than 50% and had to be tore down to be rebuilt, they cannot even rebuild it.
I'm not arguing over the I1. I'm telling you, the I2 becomes the problem, because you can have a chemical plant, and it can go beyond what you want to use it for. And that's, as we've been on the council, I think that's always been a problem for the council, is to give a heavier... the council, is to give a heavier use industrial area inside our corporate city limits. And that's, it's not the fight of what you're doing, I think, it's so much of the fight of a heavier use, industrial use, inside our corporate city limits.
Alvin Turner?
And I guess my concern is the number of violations that are occurring on your property, and they're repeat violations. So it seems that you get a violation, you clean it up, but then it doesn't sink in that there was a problem, so you get another violation, and it's, you know, and then we have to see...
Well, see, one violation I did get, and I cleaned it up, and I called the city and said, "Come out and look, it is cleaned up." And somebody took and dropped a car out in front of my building. And I'm sitting there walking in, trying to figure out whose car this is, and she drives by. I get people that drop cars off out front, they've said it. Other tow companies bring cars into my lot.
But you don't know that they're bringing them? They just come and drop them?
I get somebody call me on Monday, says, "Hey, I'm bringing a car to you," and I don't see the car until the following Tuesday. I done forgot that guy even said he was bringing the car in, until he walks in and says, "Here's my title."
But then that becomes a problem for the neighbors. It becomes a problem for the neighbors, and I mean...
And then as soon as we get to where we know what those cars are, we get them out and take care of them accordingly. I can't just go and take your car and put it behind my fence. That's grand theft auto. I have to go through the steps of finding that, get ahold of the city, finding out who owns the car. You know, I usually try to give them five or seven days to find out who owns it, to see if they show up with the title, because I've had them come in there. I had one lady drop her car off, throw her keys to the mail slot, went back to Peoria and mailed me the title.
Well, that appears to be an operations problem, that if you're going to run a business, then you need to have some type of operational procedures that would take that into consideration. I don't think that the neighbors should be held hostage, because you don't have the operational procedure that would address that. But we do have on record the multiple reoccurring violations, and that's your responsibility, and that's my concern, and that's why I'm hesitant about voting for this.
And most of those reoccurring violations is the cars outside the fence. And we've cured that. The only car that's outside the fence right now is one of the employees.
Is it operational?
Yes, it's his personal vehicle. He drove it to work. He hasn't been back in his personal vehicle for almost a week, because he takes the tow truck home.
And I would think that that's another violation, because I don't think you can leave a car parked on the street that long.
It's not on the street. And I'm working with the city right now to find out how we can change it, because when we bought the property, it had concrete all out front. The concrete out front is anywhere from this much to this much, you know, difference between the road. And I found out afterwards, after I bought the property, that there was no permits to put that concrete in. So I'm now having to go in and correct that mistake. I have to break all that concrete out, get the proper permit, put it in the recommended depth, height, and thickness to make the approach.
I know, you know, I understand what you're saying, but when you buy property to run a business, you should check all that stuff out, and you're making money from the business, so you really need to have the operational procedures in place, so that your opportunity to make money from the business doesn't infringe upon your neighbor's rights to live in their neighborhood free of a junkyard.
And the other thing is, my neighbors said something to the driver, "My dog got loose the other day, they called me personally." If the tow truck was that much of an issue, they have my personal cell phone number. They've had it since we've opened the business. They can dial the seven digits, say, "Hey, there's an issue here." They chose to bring it into here. I'd say, to me, that is not an issue when you have an I-1. And the other neighbor, like I said, the reason she's not here is because every time there's a problem, she hollers at me when she sees me. I go over, she tells me what it is, I correct it.
And this is the last thing I'm going to say, because I don't want to get into back and forth with you, but the appropriate venue for their problem is here, because if they did not bring it here so that it could be adjudicated one way or another, we would continue to have the reoccurring violations, we would continue to have the reoccurring issues. So I believe this is the proper venue for their complaint, and that's the last thing I want to say.
And as far as the weeds go, we let the weeds grow up along the fence, the grass gets cut, but we let the roaming vine go up, just like you would around any other property, to block people from seeing in.
Alvin Simpson?
I got a couple of issues, especially with your last statement. There are ways to block people from seeing in without weeds growing up. You could...
It's a roaming vine, it's not actually a weed. It's a plant that most people use on, you go out to Panta Creek, you can see them on fences out there. This is not a weed per se, it's actually a roaming vine.
But there are other methods that you can use as a business, if you're going to be a good neighbor, that you could use to prevent people from seeing in, and it doesn't have to be a vine, because you can still see through vines, but not that thick, okay? I mean, there's coverings that you could weave through your fencing to prevent that.
I agree with you there.
And you don't need to really respond to everything that I say. The other thing is, you know, you indicated, you're saying, "I don't have any control over people who drop cars off in front of my building, my property." You should have, as a businessman, you should have a mechanism in place, and I agree with Alvin Turner, that so that people know that they can't just drop a vehicle off in front of your property, okay? You know, you don't even live in the area. How would you feel, how would your neighbors feel if something of this nature were put across the street from you? And I think you really don't, you only need to respond, but you need to really think about that. We're talking quality of life, we're talking property values. You're talking cha-ching, cha-ching. You're saying that I make more money dismantling these vehicles than doing something with them, getting rid of them whole. They bought thousands of dollars for their home, but if this...
I will pay for the appraisal to see if it is valued at that.
See, you're really being...
I shouldn't have said that, but I know...
I'm done, thank you.
Alvin Lesko?
Okay. What I'd like to do, Mayor, is I want to withdraw my motion, and I'd like to hold this. I want to meet with the owner and the you folks also, and zoning, and see if we can work something out on this before we bring it back. So I'd like to withdraw.
Okay. Second?
All right, yes.
Okay. So the motion to postpone for...
Yes.
For March 18?
March 18.
It's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to postpone, Docut number 2014-002, until the March 18, the zoning meeting. Alvin Turner?
I just have a question. So with this motion and the postponement, then does he continue, does he continue to dismantle, or...
He continues to operate till we...
And ma'am, I haven't taken a car apart in over a month. I hauled the last that were taken apart out at the beginning of the month. I haven't been in there to take cars apart in about three weeks.
Okay.
So I am trying to stay within the guidelines, because I don't want to cause any more headache for you guys. But the car lot, it's stacking up with cars right now, waiting to grow again.
Is the motion second, discuss further discussion?
My understanding was what you said was that when you opened the business, you thought it was legal for you to dismantle, and then when you found out it wasn't, you filed the zoning, could I finish? When you filed... No, no, it wasn't. You filed the zoning petition for relief, so that you could do this legally, and that in the interim, you were continuing to dismantle vehicles. Isn't that what you told us earlier?
Yes, but...
But now you're saying you've stopped dismantling?
But three weeks ago, I stopped dismantling the car.
So are you telling us that you're not going to dismantle anymore? Are you telling us that you're not going to dismantle anymore cars until this zoning petition is resolved, one way or the other?
I am trying not to. If I run out of room, I'm going to have to move them out. But right now, I am trying to do within that. I am trying to clean up the metal pile that is sitting there, which the weather has actually slowed me down on cleaning it up.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, although in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no to postpone to March 18. Motion passes 7-3. Next item on the zoning agenda is Docut number 2014-003, for property located at 1221 1241 Noel Point Place. The petitioner is RSBR Investments LLC, a contract purchaser. The present zoning classification is an I-1 light industrial district, section 155.040. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to B-1 highway business service district, section 155.033, to allow petitioner to construct and operate a retail sales dollar general store. Springfield-Samson County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is to approve petition he has submitted for reclassification to a B-1 highway business service district, section 155.033. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to hold this for 30 days. Second?
It's been moved in second to hold this until the March 18 zoning meeting discussion. Hearing no discussion, although in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the zoning agenda is Docut number 2014-004, for property located at 1106 East Ash Street. The petitioner is Rafit Kattum.
Yes.
The present zoning classification is a B-1 highway business service district, section 155.033. The requested zoning relief is a variance of section 155.098 retailer service establishments, 155.111 access to off-street parking facilities, and 155.114 regulations for location of off-street parking facilities, to allow the petitioner to fix up this property and open up a convenience store and to allow two parking spaces instead of the four required, to allow vehicles to back out onto the right-of-way, and to allow parking in the required front yard. The Springfield-Samson County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial. The planning and zoning commission recommendation is to accept the staff's recommendation to deny the petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Second? It's been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation to deny the petition. Discussion. Is there anyone that wants to speak to the council on the issue? Hearing no discussion, although in favor of the motion to deny, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. Final item on the zoning agenda is Docut number 2014-005, for property located at 3200 Adley Stevenson Drive. Petitioner is the City of Springfield. The present zoning classification is an I-2 heavy industrial district, section 155.041. The requested zoning relief is a variance of section 155.300B7. General sign regulations exempt signs, public information signs to exceed two-square-foot limit, and to allow a total sign size of 3,485 square feet, and 155.480K37. Landscape screening and lighting of a sign to allow public information sign on the side of a boiler building. The sign will aid the public in locating the exit off I-55 into Springfield for the Lincoln sites. Springfield-Samson County Regional Planning Commission amended recommendation is approval. The planning and zoning commission recommendation is approval of petition as submitted, based on the staff's amended recommendation for a variance of section 155.300B7. General sign regulations exempt signs, public information signs to exceed two-square-foot limit, and to allow sign size of 3,485 square feet, and 155.480K37. Landscape screening, lighting of the sign. The sign will provide direction for the recommended entry into the City of Springfield to get to the Lincoln sites, thereby providing community benefit. Sign shall be, shall be as, is contained in the exhibit included in the petition, and shall be limited to the following language. Visit Mr. Lincoln's hometown, Springfield, exit 98B. Chair will entertain a motion.
Approve as filed.
Second?
It's been moved in second to approve as filed. Discussion?
Mayor, Mr. Point of Information, exit 98B is which exit?
That would be the Clear Lake exit.
Mayor, this is the mural sign on the new CWLP power plant, is that correct?
Yes, mhm. Further discussion? No further discussion, although in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. We will move into the regular city council agenda. We'll give Treasurer Langfelder the opportunity to sit down and get adjusted, and then we'll ask Treasurer Langfelder for a presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor. The corporate fund monthly cash report for the month of January, we had a beginning balance of $8,036,685. Receipts for the month totaled $7,924,845. Disbursements for the month of January totaled $10,789,739. So our ending cash balance at the end of January totaled $5,171,791.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve financial report.
So moved, second?
It's been moved in second to discussion, hearing no discussion, although in favor of the motion, say aye, those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will recognize its chief utility engineer, Eric Habe, of the Office of Public Utilities, for a brief presentation regarding CWLP finances. Emphasize the word brief.
This will be the same format as previous presentations, and we'll go through it pretty quickly here. Summary points, electric fund cash is negative again. It's typical, this is through December. We're getting October, November revenues, which are lower, plus we had some expenses related to outage, unit four outages. Water fund cash is positive, and maintains a strong position there. On the electric fund, when you look at that, negative cash mainly comes from still we own line of credit, $1.6 million, and the water fund payable. And this chart shows kind of the trend, you know, summer revenues, we trended up, we've trended back down this month, to a negative position. Looking at the sources of revenue, retail side, that's still through December, $9.35 million under budget, and that was due to the mild summer revenues. Again, the thing I've said before, it's the lowest electric usage we've had since 1996 this past summer. Wholesale revenues are over budget, and that hopefully trend will continue. Electric fund expenses were still under budget significantly, by about $14.8 million. If you look at the next slide, it's debt coverage. We slipped a little bit from last month, but we're still above the $1.25, and hope the end of the year, above that. Next slide shows the debt coverage month by month, and we're a little bit lower than last year, but, you know, trending similar to last year. Look at the water fund position. Again, as we talked about, it's in a favorable position, strong working cash, plus has a receivable due from the electric fund. The water fund cash, you can see it kind of peaked out with summer revenues and declining a little bit as we go into the winter here. Expenses and revenues, you can see wholesale revenues are actually a little bit under budget by $1.42 million, but expenses are under budget by a larger percentage, helping out the financial position. If you look at, again, the debt coverage on the water side, we're above two, which is a strong position, again, to maintain. Labor budgets for both electric and water, both are under budget, 2.2% and 3.8%, combined 3.5%. And then you look at the last page, it's pilot performance, we're still over budget on that, and about 10 and a half percent, we've been staying steady with that. So from there, I'll take any questions.
So you're saying the pilot, we've taken in more revenue under the pilot than we projected, you said, is that correct?
Yes.
But our, over the past few years, you've downgraded the projection based on what our experience has been, is that correct?
Yes. But the pilot is based on the formula of actuals, so, but compared to budget, yeah, our budgeted wholesale sales, we've taken down, because, but, and we're over budget this year is the primary driver of that.
We're over, we've sold more, okay, we've sold more wholesale electricity than we projected.
Than the budget, yes.
Mr. Habe, do you have any idea what these figures will be in a couple of months, based on the winter we've had?
On the electric side, they should increase. And, you know, we definitely, we see a trend down in the winter months typically. Will definitely stabilize with the recent cold snap. I mean, you know, people that have electric heat definitely seeing increases in their bills, and wholesale power prices have been favorable, so we should see probably a little bit of positive trend over the next several months.
Would there be any value in having these piles and piles of snow, and I know probably in the next couple of days, it's going to start to melt, but I don't think they will all melt, have them trucked to the lake? have them trucked to the lake? And I'm concerned more about flooding than anything else, because if we get these warm days in a row, and it's supposed to be through, and it's supposed to rain Thursday, that's probably going to contribute to our overflow sewers.
Yeah, that's probably more of a plug works question. As far as, is it a problem putting into the lake? Volume-wise, no. I mean, the amount of snow turning into water is, you know, not that big a deal. There may be concerns of, you know, there may be high salt concentrations and some other things that we would have to look into, but as far as just putting in the lake as far as volume, I don't see that as an issue, but, you know, we can look into that.
Mr. Mayor. Also, a city water line and power question. Our crews worked deep hours yesterday into the night restoring power. Have we restored all power to our customers at this point?
Yeah, everybody was restored a little after 10 o'clock last night. I think that was the last customer, yeah. We had crews working out through the entire weather, and our guys did a very good job. And, you know, that was electric, and the water guys have been working very hard for the past month or so, and responding to a lot of water main breaks.
Thank you.
Alderman Tyler?
I would like to offer the congratulations and gratitude of everyone who contacted me. Anyone who contacted me about a power outage, their power was restored within one to two hours. I had people who were very surprised and pleased at how quickly things turned around. Your guys did a really good job.
Yeah, and there were a few people that were longer than one to two hours, that had bigger problems, but yeah, our guys have been very responsive, and they do take pride in restoring. That's why our outage times are probably half of the industry in Illinois, so.
They have at least five different emails or phone calls where they specifically said to tell the lineman, "Thank you."
No, they definitely appreciate it. They earned it on those nights.
Anything about bond ratings?
What's that?
Anything about bond ratings?
Well, yes, I can talk about that. The water fund was reaffirmed at an AA1 rating, which is a very solid rating for the water fund, and it was maintained at that. So, you know, we're very happy to maintain that rating that was announced today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to incorporate pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
It's been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded for discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the February 4th, 2014 city council meeting and approve the minutes.
It's been moved and seconded.
Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the February 11th, 2014 special city council meeting and approve the minutes.
It's been moved and seconded.
Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
It's been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded for discussion. Hearing no discussion.
Mayor, I'd make a request to remove 2014-57 from the consent and place it on the debate agenda.
What is it?
2014-57, the contract for the demand analysis of water.
Can we have a discussion on that? Is there a reason for removing it? You're doing what, Alderman, Kimmon?
I asked it to be removed, I asked that it be removed, and Alderman has a right to remove a...
To put it on debate, is that correct? Not holding committee, just to put it on debate?
That's what...
Okay, thank, I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
It's been moved and seconded.
Discussion.
Discussion, Mayor. I'd like to, Madam Clerk, I'd like to be recorded as a no vote on 2014-043, 2014-044, 2014-045. Those are liquid licenses having to do with video gaming partners. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes ten, zero. Agendas numbers 2011-104, 2012-123, 2012-226, 2012-376, 2013-128, 2013-174, 2013-193, 2013-250, 2013-260, 2013-266, 2013-376, 2013-397, 2013-457, 2013-469, 2013-470, 2014-022, 2014-024, 2014-058, and 2014-059 remain tabled or in committee. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-053, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of contract UE14-11-70. Generating facilities scaffolding with the Brand Energy Services LLC for a three-year term and amount not to exceed $3,300,000 for the electric generation department for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-053 on final passage.
It's been moved and seconded for final passage.
Discussion. Hearing no final, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes ten, zero. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2014-057, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with CDM Smith Incorporated in the amount of $64,644 for the water demand analysis for the Office of Public Utilities. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-057 on final passage.
It's been moved and seconded for final passage.
It's been moved and seconded for final passage. Discussion.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Hobbie. When we were, just debated this at our committee of the whole, I had asked you about the 90, well, you said you were going to send me the 1991 demand analysis. I didn't receive that, but I had also asked you, what was the, what did that demand analysis in 1991 project that our actual demand would be, say, in 2013? And what was the actual demand?
We, we're getting that data, and we've got it. I know Ted's got a draft going so that we'll be able to supply it to you. What actually we found is it's tracking fairly close to the estimates. You know, it varies a little bit year to year because consumption varies, but we're within a reasonable amount of the estimate.
I had heard some critics say that the, that in out years, the demand analysis was way off. You're telling me that's not the case?
That's not what I've seen, yeah. We will get you the report with our actual data, and you can compare it for yourself rather than hearing what a third-party that supposedly under Lake probably said.
And you, didn't PMCI do a study in 2008 of the water demand for the central Illinois communities, including Springfield?
Who?
I think it's a company or agency called PMCI.
I'm not familiar with that one.
PMCI was the company that was purchased by CDM.
Okay. Okay, so it's a, CDM's predecessor. Did they do a study?
Their predecessor did a study in 1991.
Was there a study in 2008 that you're...
We revised the 1991 study with our own estimates.
What did that revision show? Can I have a copy of that?
Well, it's basically a regression analysis in Excel. We can get you a copy.
Pardon?
It's a regression analysis in Excel. We can get you a copy of that.
What is, can you explain what a regression analysis is?
It takes what the actual usage trend that goes on and the uses is predict it forward based on what the curve looks like of our usage.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Well, just, I'm gonna, you know, I don't think we have adequate information, so if we, I'm gonna, I'll be voting presence.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes nine, zero with one present. The next item on the agenda is 2014-063, an ordinance approving the appointment of Robert A. Brosh as department manager for administrative services for the Office of Public Utilities. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-063 on final passage.
It's been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded for discussion.
Yes, Mayor, I'm going, not going to be voting for this because, as I said at the committee of the whole, the ordinance under which the manager is being appointed says specifically that the general manager of the Office of Public Utilities shall appoint the manager of this agency, of the administrative services department, with the approval of the mayor and the advice and consent of the city council. Now, there, there is no general manager of the Department of Public Utilities, so I don't think under our city code, this appointment is a proper appointment. Now, I've introduced a ordinance to amend the code to provide that the mayor himself, the mayor shall make the appointment, not the, not the general manager of the Office of Public Utilities. I don't think any appointments that come before the city council for approval should be made by anyone but the mayor. I don't think department heads who are unelected should be appointing people whose appointments we have to approve. So, if that ordinance, if that proposed ordinance becomes law, becomes part of my, our city code, I would have probably a different position on this nomination, but under the current law, I cannot, cannot vote for it.
Further discussion? Alderman Simpson?
Mr. Mayor, I will be voting no on this appointment primarily because I believe that it's unnecessary. And I will speak later with regard to where I think staff ought to be, primarily the library. And I don't think this is money well spent. I think it really kind of shows in my mind, and I would bet in the minds of several citizens, many citizens, a lack of leadership in terms of putting forth an appointment, this appointment as opposed to looking very seriously at doing something to extend the hours of the library.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Motion passes seven, two with one present. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2014-064, an ordinance approving the appointment of Kenneth Winslow as chief of the Springfield Police Department. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-064 on final passage.
It's been moved and seconded for passage.
Discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
We just got some information, and I'd really like to hold this in committee. Nothing against Ken Winslow, but I'd really like to be able to read the information we got until we vote. If that's not acceptable, then I guess we vote, but I just got forward some stuff today and would like to be able to ask about it, but if we don't want to do that, we could vote, I guess.
Alderman Turner?
I tend to agree with Alderman Edwards. I received some information actually yesterday morning. I sent Chief Winslow an email asking for some comment, and it was a very short, to-the-point email, asking for some comment, and I never got a response. So, I don't, I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure why I didn't get a response because Chief Winslow is usually very, you know, quick about responding, but I did not get a response, and so it's kind of concerning that I did not get a response.
Further discussion?
I don't know if Alderman Edwards or Turner can, is this something we could discuss in executive session that might get their questions answered tonight, or do they, I don't know? Is that something we should do, or?
I don't know, I mean, if, if the chief wants to speak on it, he has the email.
I, I'll make the motion then.
Are we prepared to go on executive session?
We are always prepared. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the city council for purpose of holding an executive session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2 of the Open Meetings Act covering section C1 Personnel Matters.
I mean, I can ask my questions in public. I'm not embarrassed. Whatever you guys want to do, but...
It's been moved.
Well, Alderman Edwards, you, I thought you were making a motion to hold this in committee. Is that what you're intending to do?
Well, I did, but I asked for it to be held in committee, but I didn't second it.
Well, we've got a motion, we've got a motion, the second over here, for executive committee.
I second your motion for it.
Oh, you do?
Mm-hmm. I did not hear that.
What, what did you say?
No, he said he didn't get a second. I said I second, seconded.
Well, then that, if you seconded his motion, then that would have come prior to the motion for the executive session.
Alderman Simpson?
Just a point of clarification. If, the concern is the questions haven't been asked and answered, I'm sorry, not answered, and if we go into executive session and they're answered, then we can, can we come out and vote? Or you, is there more detailed information that you need? I guess it would depend on the answers to the question.
Alderman Edwards, would you be willing to hold it till after the executive session? Your motion?
I mean, I can hold, I can, I can withdraw that motion, but that's what you want to do.
Or we just do it? Withdraw? Alderman Edwards? Did you withdraw?
Yeah. I said I would.
Okay. So, we've got a motion, the second for executive session. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Motion passes six, five. We'll turn into...